All right folks, we're ready to go on your go. We'll watch for the two queues. Good afternoon, welcome everyone. Thank you for joining us. I'd like to call this special meeting of the Kansas City, Kansas Community College Board of Trustees, special meeting to order this March nineteenth, twenty twenty four. Cheryl, could we have roll call please?
Trustee Ash.
Here.
Vice Chair Chriswell. Trustee Gilstrap.
Here.
Trustee Hoskin Sutton.
Here.
Chair Isnard.
Here.
Trustee Scruggs, on through you.
Here.
All right, thank you. At this time I'll announce that we have four executive sessions this afternoon and at this time I would call for a motion for the first executive session to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel for ten minutes duration with possible action to follow an open session. Open session will take place in Upper Jewel Lounge and in the virtual meeting room. Have a motion please.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. The board members will be allowed time to travel to the special meeting room at this time. Thank you.
Motion carries. We are in open session. Thank you for bearing with us. Well, we had much to discuss there. We will begin the regular meeting at the conclusion of the special session. At this time, for action on executive session number one, I'd like to call for a motion to offer employment to the president for a term of three years, commencing July 1, 2024 and ending June 30, 2027, including the performance bonus as discussed during executive session. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. This time, could we have a roll call vote, please, Cheryl?
Cheryl, you may be muted.
Trustee Ash?
Yes.
Vice Chair Chriswell. Trustee Gilstrap.
Aye.
Trustee Hoskin Sutton.
No.
Chair Isnard?
Yes.
Trustee Scruggs, on through you.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. For executive session number two, there is no action needed this evening. Moving on to executive session number three, I would call for a motion to release faculty member Carrie Domeno from her contract and waive the liquidated damages fee.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now for executive session number four, I would call for a motion to approve the selection of KCKCC Board of Trustees candidates to invite for the in-person interviews. Those individuals are... Apologize, I didn't have that ready. Orlando Alonso. Mary Ricketts. Jamie Johnson. Fred Possilwait. And Deon Witten. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Chair, I would move that we adjourn the executive session. I mean, I'm sorry, the special session.
The special meeting?
Special meeting, yes.
We have a motion to adjourn. We have a second.
So moved.
So moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Trustees this March 19th, 2024 to order. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by trustee Gilstrap. Thank you. At this time, I'll read the KCKCC mission statement, which is to inspire individuals and enrich our community one student at a time. With that, Cheryl, could we have a roll call, please?
Trustee Ash?
Here.
Vice Chair Chriswell. Trustee Gilstrap? Trustee Gilstrap?
Here.
Trustee Hoskin Sutton?
Here.
Chair Isnard?
Here.
Trustee Scruggs, on through you.
Here.
Thank you. How can I please have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we'll have the audience to patrons and petitioners. This time, I'd like to invite the public to raise their hands in the chat or approach the podium for the opportunity to address the board. Addressees must state their name and address for the record before making their comment or question, and there is a five-minute time limit. Do we have anyone approaching the podium or in the chat?
I have no one in the chat.
Okay, thank you. Next, I'll invite the presentation of the police chief's commendations presented by Mr. Robert Putzke, Chief of College Police. Chief Putzke, good evening.
Good evening. How are you all? Thanks very much for giving me a few minutes today to share with you two commendations for outstanding performance in our department. These commendations stem from an incident that happened on February 28th, but before I read the commendations, I'd like to just introduce the officers that are going to receive them. Sergeant John Anderson, currently one of our night shift sergeants. He works 6:00 PM to 4:00 AM, and I'm glad he's doing it. He's been with our department for three and a half years. He previously has worked for both the KCI Airport Police Department as well as the KU Medical Center Police Department, and he has over nine years' experience as a police officer. Officer Kara Boardwick is currently assigned to the day shift. She's previously worked two years as a deputy with the Johnson County Sheriff's Department, and she was on the job with us for two weeks when the incident occurred in February. The incident was as follows. On the night of February 28th, Sergeant Anderson and Officer Boardwick were working the midnight shift when they observed a vehicle transiting campus at an unbelievably high rate of speed in excess of 60 miles an hour. The vehicle ran the stop sign at speed at campus in Delaware and the light at campus in State. Needless to say, this presented quite a danger to not only our campus, but the KCK community at large. Anderson Boardwick attempted to stop the vehicle while it was on campus, but once it left campus, they followed it, relaying information and direction of travel to the KCK Police Department in an effort that they could stop the vehicle. The vehicle experienced mechanical failure in the warehousing area south of campus before KCK officers could respond. Recognizing the immediate danger to the community, Anderson and Boardwick immediately conducted a felony traffic stop before the driver could flee the scene. Once in custody, it was determined that the driver was not only seriously impaired, but also had outstanding warrants for rape and was suspected of attacking multiple women in Wyandotte County. The driver also had previous charges of lewd and lascivious behavior with a child. The driver was charged by our officers with felony DUI, third offense, felony fleeing and eluding a police officer, aggravated escape from custody, possession of marijuana, unlawful distribution of a controlled substance, and possession of drug paraphernalium. Anderson and Boardwick tonight are receiving letters of commendation from the department as well as letters of appreciation from the college, signed by President Moser and Chair Isnard. And I'd like to personally thank Anderson and Boardwick for their swift and decisive actions in apprehending the suspect and removing a significant danger from our community. and removing a significant danger from our community. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. We used to call that getting a package deal, you know, all that stuff.
All right. Again, another thank you to all of our college police department for all that they do, but especially Sergeant Anderson and Officer Boardwick for their actions during that very serious event. Thank you again. At this time, I'll invite the presentation of the Student Affairs Division Annual Update presented by Dr. Chris Myers, Vice President of Student Affairs and Enrollment Management.
Good afternoon. Good to see everybody. It's really my pleasure to come and speak to you. Again, this is my second time doing it as a vice president since I've started here. So what I wanted to do is give you a quick update on some items that often are not discussed in our board report activities. So for newer board members and folks who have been here, we've been very intentional over the last couple of years in terms of developing a defined purpose and mission for the Student Affairs Enrollment Management Division around a singular purpose to support students coming to school and thriving in school, and we have very specific objectives towards that related to meeting them where they are, reducing barriers, and making sure that they have access opportunities and services that we provide to the community. Several things that we have initiated are part of the strategic plan that we discussed last year when we presented this report that I want to highlight. Are there some, we've made some tremendous activities in terms of advocacy in our region. So for example, within the Student Success Center, we started a first-generation student advisory board, and this is a group for us to help galvanize our resources towards first generation, which is kind of ubiquitous at our college. You think about the types of students that we serve, and so that's really been a good opportunity for us to to create more resources and think about those holistic support services that we could do with that in conjunction for Title III grant. We've mentioned the Student Engagement Platform, which is critical in terms of providing opportunities for students to get involved on campus. That is on track to go live this fall. New student orientation is going through a revised format where we're going to more regular orientations, which are more of onboarding amid the student days, and those will start happening this week, or weekly in April. And then we've also been very mindful explaining our support services when it comes to student mental health services. And so the Council's advocacy office this year has launched a new program, which is short thirty-minute opportunities for students to join them. It's called Let's Talk via Zoom as a way to introduce them to self-care and those types of resources. And also, also through the support of the trustees and others, you know, the expansion of the Basic Needs Center downstairs has been a very tremendous asset to us. With that, I do want to turn it over because I think it's important to also speak about all the hires we've done. This year, we only have six vacant positions. When I spoke this time last year, I think we had about thirty or so, and so we've really filled out the staff, and I think we're at a very stable point there where we can really start providing some real activities. But with that, I wanted to turn it over to Ms. Danielle Frieders and also Brady Beckman from our Student Success Center Career Services, so she can highlight some of the exciting stuff that's happening in the career services space for us.
Danielle.
Hello, thank you. All right. Thank you guys so much. I'm really happy to be here and share with you a little bit about what we are doing in career services. We're really working to build a campus culture that is centered around career-connected learning. There's a lot of Cs in that sentence there. But to do that, we're focusing on several main areas. One is providing the resources and assistance for students from start to finish. Perspective students, current students, and alumni receive our assistance and services. We are partnering with faculty to bring career development into the classroom, collaborating with other departments on campus to bring those activities to students, building and strengthening employer relationships, and leveraging technology to maximize our impact. For the last year, just with our services and assistance, we had over one hundred and eighty students meet with us for individual appointments. We had over one hundred and seventy-five students attend workshops. Over five hundred students attended career fairs here last year, and we have two more coming up in the next two weeks that we're very excited about. We also launched our new Prep with Career Services program this spring, which is, it's a more informal way for students to come. We have a virtual session and an in-person session each week. We have a topic for students, but it's really, it's a safe space for students to ask questions about their career development, about their career goals. We talk about, you know, a variety of different topics. That's been really exciting so far. We also are working to partner with faculty on campus. We worked with over twenty faculty members in the last year to bring career development into the classroom, whether it be presentations or resume assignments, mock interviews, bringing all those things to the students where they are in class. Also collaborating with other departments, we've been doing a lot of collaboration with residence life, with campus activities and engagement, with the Veterans Center and other groups to bring those things to every aspect of the student experience. Employer relationships, we are really trying to, you know, serve our employers in this area. Last year, we had over nine hundred and fifty employers from this area, post over four thousand jobs and internships for our students and graduates on handshake, and that number continues to grow. We've also been very fortunate to have over two hundred employers visit on campus, either for career fairs or hiring tables on our, on our centers and campuses. Collaborating with other groups on campus that are also working with employers, as Dr. Ryobi's team, we have the faculty program coordinators, others that are working with employers. We're starting to work with them so that we can make sure all of our employers in this area have access to all of the resources that KCKCC has to offer them. We are also working to collaborate with the local chambers here in KCK and Lansing-Leavenworth to make sure we get more employers engaged. And then also leveraging technology. We had over five hundred students begin using the handshake platform last year for job and internship searching. And again, as we spread the word about that, that continues to grow as well. Career services, we have our website with resources available and social media accounts, and we also make sure that all of our services are available virtually and in person. So prep sessions, appointments, workshops, all are also available virtually because we don't want to leave anybody out. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, but I really, I just want you guys to know how excited we are about everything that we're working on and building, and we're only getting started. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Great progress. Any questions or comments from the board?
I'd just say very, very good, and it's really nice to see all of these things starting to take place because we've been trying to ramp up the career center for a long time, and I think you're really making it work. So thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you.
Some really impressive numbers, so keep, keep going.
Yeah, and as Danielle said, we're just starting too, so we have a tremendous team.
That's awesome.
Yeah, and the interest in the community is really, we're finding, we're finding people coming to us saying, how can we participate and how we can help? So that's really exciting.
Awesome.
Yeah. So thank you. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Myers and team. Next, we'll have the presentation of the College Employment, excuse me, College Employee Satisfaction Survey presented by Mr. Sam DeLeón, Director of Employee Relations and Interim Chief Human Resources Officer. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, all. As you all may know, the two thousand twenty-three Employee Satisfaction Survey was conducted by RNL, the Ruffalo Noel Levitz. So here at the community college, we do a really, really neat job with the College Employee Satisfaction Survey in working with RNL this case. So with the CSS, what we like to do is definitely connect with this organization and identify the two thousand twenty-three Employee Satisfaction Overview of respondents requesting information from full-time employees, part-time employees. In this case, we had one hundred and seventy-seven full-time employees and twenty part-time employees. So out of that group, the classification indicated that we received responses from our faculty, staff, and administrators. And you see our numbers here. There were seventy-four faculty that responded, staff, one hundred and fourteen, and administrators, seven in total. And so the longevity is also identified here of who all responded, anywhere from individuals that worked here less than one year, all the way up to more than twenty years. So let's dive a little bit deeper into the numbers. So in two thousand twenty-three, the Employee Satisfaction Survey Overview also includes thirty-five percent of the six hundred and sixty-seven invited, responded. So what that comes out to in two thousand twenty-three, the survey was disseminated on November twenty-seventh in comparison to the numbers of two thousand twenty-one. We did see that fifty-two percent of individuals responded, so we did see a little bit of dip. But we also saw that in two thousand twenty-three, the survey was disseminated in April rather than November. So those are a little bit of the numbers as we dig a little bit deeper. So as we continue on, here's a composition of those that responded. And we have an eighty-nine point eight percent of folks that responded. So the position of administrators, we do have four percent, along with a staff, a much larger number, of close to sixty percent faculty in the thirty percent range. So with that being said, we did, again, have eighty-nine point eight percent of people that responded that were full-timers. So as we continue to dig a little bit deeper in the numbers of the, in two thousand twenty-three, a little bit deeper about the, the survey, it consists of four sections. And here are the four categories of those sections: campus culture and policies, work environment, institutional goals, along with involvement and planning. So when we do look at the overview, I do want to keep this in mind as we go over a few of the numbers. And we'll get into a little bit more here in a moment. So again, the CES, like other RNL instruments, use three scores of priority in importance, satisfaction, and identifying the gap between the two. So here's a little bit more about importance and satisfaction, one being not important, important, and five being most important, or very important. And then, of course, very satisfied, I'm sorry, not satisfied versus very satisfied. So in there with our numbers here, we'll look at here in a moment, we'll show the gap. So I'm hoping you all can see this font. I know it's a little bit of a challenge, but forgive me. So as we look into these numbers, we do see a breakdown, and I wanted to highlight the top three based on satisfaction in two thousand twenty-three. So here are the top three. So we looked at the three categories: my team works efficiently and effectively together to consistently produce high-quality results. So when we look at the mean of importance versus satisfaction, we do see, these are, again, the top three based on satisfaction. So with that, the mean is three point eight eight with a difference, a gap of showing less than one, zero point seven three. So category two, staff takes pride in their work. And then, then you see the importance, but satisfaction, it's number two in satisfaction. So finally, number three, the faculty takes pride in their work. And this is third of the top, top three based in satisfaction. So as we look in additional numbers in two thousand twenty-three, we want to now look at the top three in work environment. So the three categories indicate treat supervisors with respect. We see that the standard satisfaction, I'm sorry, the mean satisfaction is all the way up there at four point five five. The next category is the type of work. I do on most days is personally rewarding. So many of us that are in higher education, especially working in our, in our community, we see that, that shows, along with feeling physically safe at work. And again, if we all know physical security, and that was part of tonight's presentation, we know that we have an environment here that is very safe and secure, and our employees respond that way.
One minute.
So as we proceed with a few numbers, we want to look at the bottom three based on satisfaction. So there are the three categories. There are effective lines of communication between departments. We see as the top item in our bottom three based on satisfaction. So what we are going to do as a team through Dr. Moser's office and the communications team is work on a plan for the communications internally here at the college. In the next two categories, you can see those as well. But again, these are the bottom three based on satisfaction. And two thousand twenty-three, the work environment, the bottom three based on satisfaction as well, work environment. So here are our three categories, and you see the mean versus in importance and the mean in satisfaction. And the mean and satisfaction on the top of my department has the staff needed to work to do the job well. We do see that there is a difference in two point seven eight, in a gap of one point seven nine. So we have a little work to do in these, these last two slides. But nevertheless, we're doing really, really great with communicating with our, with our employees. So as we get to a conclusion to tonight's presentation, as we see the important goals identified in two thousand twenty-three are not very different from those from two thousand twenty-one, and you see the list of all, and again, our top two items are increase of enrollment to new students, and we are here for our students, along with retaining more of the current students here at the college as well. So again, we are here for our students. So in conclusion, I'd like to just communicate and add, here are the final steps that we have received and we've shared from RNL, some final suggestions and recommendations that are possible next steps. So certainly communication, we're going to work with the team internally, select some priorities, identify the low-hanging fruit and see where we can identify some areas where we can achieve some things upfront and early on, and reread through comments and identify some of those areas where we do very well, but also where we can improve upon, and using RNL and college suggestions. And finally, the last three, I won't read them verbatim, but thanking our employees for responding. And moving forward, we'll continue and communicate and hear from our people, hear from our employees, our staff, faculty, part-timers and full-timers. So with that, I conclude tonight's presentation. I thank you all very well, very much.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Anything? Okay, thank you.
I don't think we had, or I skipped over it. Did we have that in our packet?
I did not see it.
Okay. You want to do the presentation first? Yeah, yeah.
Just provide an overview, and we'll work through Dr. Moser's office.
Yeah, that'd be great because I couldn't read it.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next on our agenda are communications, and there are none scheduled, so we'll move on to board committee reports. This time, I'll invite the Board Finance Committee to report, and with Vice Chair Chriswell unable to make it this evening, trustee Ash has agreed to do that presentation.
Sure. Well, we met a week ago on the twelfth, as is our custom, and reviewed the financials, had, as always, pretty robust discussion. The college financial position remains strong, and the college continues to effectively manage its financial resources, just, just as we, we have seen. We had a special guest and a special presentation. Matt Willard is the Wyandotte County Appraiser. He delivered a presentation to the finance committee along with, it was open to all board members. But the presentation covered the two thousand twenty-four Wyandotte County, two thousand twenty-four appraised, appraised value process. And then he followed up and sent the presentation out. I think everybody received it. So good discussion there. Nobody has a crystal ball, but his best informed guess was maybe a ten percent increase in valuation next year, but it's an election year, so we'll see what, what actually happens. And the, and the state's working on some things too. And, and the state's working on some things too, so it could change, it could change based on that. We did discuss some proposed changes to the financial board report format. We talked about some, some proposed changes. Basically, it's in the way we report grants that we receive for students. So we, I mean, it's really, we're just kind of like the fiscal agent. It's just passed through, you know, that we get the grants and then we disperse it to the students. And we've been reporting it, you know, as income, and it's really not income, if you will, to the college. It's just, it's passing through to the students. And Dr. Keneven may have some more to say about it in her report, but we did agree that it should come forward to the full board. And, and this isn't something that we would change or do right away, but it would, it would begin like in the next fiscal year, so like in July. So more on that to come. And also, we talked about the board financial training, and the finance committee agreed that board financial training would be scheduled. And this is really open to all board members, but especially for our newer board members. And it's always good to kind of get a refresher on that so that we know as we get these reports each month exactly what we're looking at, and certainly what our legal fiduciary responsibility is in terms of the finances for the college. Dr. Moser gave a downtown update, and it is going to, I'm sure he's going to talk about it when he gives his report here in a few minutes, but we're well on the way. And he did send out some communication to us saying we had cleared at least the next hurdle that was before us with the unified government, and so we're moved forward. He'll talk more about it. And then all the detailed financial content is included in Dr. Keneven's report, and she's going to give a report on that. So I think that covers everything. And thank you, trustee for taking such good notes. That concludes the report.
Thank you, trustee Ash. Any questions or comments from the board?
The date set for the, the training?
Not yet. I don't know if, if we wait till we get the new trustee on board.
Probably makes sense, yes.
It would, it would not occur until May then, right? Or sometime after we vote and approve that person in April. I guess it could occur, you know, after our meeting in, in April or early in May, if everybody's good holding on that long. Probably would, like you say, Linda, make the most sense, include everybody.
Yeah, and it would be helpful as we move into more formal budget conversations.
Exactly.
FY 2025 as well.
Makes sense. I'm glad to hear that we're talking about changing a little bit of how that revenue for the financial aid is showing in our financial statements. It's funny in accounting sometimes how we do that, we double count revenue and then expense, and it makes our budget look bigger than it is, but it's just two different ways of doing things.
Well, actually, what's proposed, I think, is a little more transparent. We're still going to report on it. It's still going to be on a report, but it's going to be below the line instead of above the line with all the other numbers. So everybody will still see it, but it'll be really a little more transparent, you know, exactly what it is. It won't inflate our, if you will, won't inflate our, our revenue line. It's kind of an artificial inflation of our revenue line.
All right, thank you. A call for a motion to accept the report?
So moved.
We've got him. It's been moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next up, we'll have a report from the board policy committee. Trustee Sutton?
It will be later when we have the policies, and I hope you had time to review them and have any questions. I'll give some updates on some concerns that I have about the policies when we get there.
All right, thank you. We have a motion to accept that report, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next up, we have the board community engagement committee. Trustee Ash?
Yes, we had an initial meeting, and really, it was just to kind of get the new members kind of in, enfolded into the commu, into the committee, if you will. And then we had a little bit of conversation regarding where we wanted to go with that. I asked the, the newest members of the committee to think about that, and we had more conversation going forward. We talked about, you know, I personally am kind of committed to re-engaging with the liberal neighborhoods task force, staying in touch with those community groups, whatever. We're still looking to do presentations, particularly in the downtown area. We'll go anywhere in the county, but particularly in the downtown area with the new campus coming there, to be sure everyone's well-informed, to get their questions answered, and so on and so forth. And then Mr. Chris Green forwarded out some documents that we had worked on in terms of what the committee does, and, you know, some goals, and so on and so forth. So we'll meet again next month and dive a little deeper into it.
Great, thank you. Definitely appreciate your work and leadership on that committee. Thank you. Any questions from the board? If not, can I get a motion to accept the report, please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next up, seems trustee Ash is popular this evening.
Yeah, I guess I'm going to give all the reports.
ACCT and...
No, Linda's going to get her turn later, but I really don't have much to report. The legislature's in session and silly season's in full swing in Topeka. And so we're, you know, KACC continues to monitor. Heather keeps her presidents and executive committee updated on what's happening there with her weekly calls. Our next meeting, if you will, or event is coming up, it'll be here pretty quickly, is actually in Junction City for the Phi Theta Kappa Awards and Honors Luncheon and Program. And then KACC will have a brief meeting following, following that. So anyone that is interested in attending that, I think Cheryl will send some information out, be sure, you know, you let her know so she gets us signed up for that. It's a great program. You get to see, you know, the best and the brightest students that the state of Kansas has to offer from all over the state. And it's, it's, it's wonderful recognition for them and their parents, you know. The guardians come and are a part of the celebration and everything. So I think that dates the 12th, if I remember right, Friday the 12th. But don't, yeah, that's correct. So 11:30 in Junction City. So be sure you communicate with Cheryl if you would like to go, and we'll work out, you know, transportation and things like that. Nothing new out of ACCT, so that's it.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments for trustee Ash?
And just a comment about the, our meeting in April in Junction City. It's during the day, and if you've never been before, I would encourage you to try to go, the Phi Theta Kappa Celebration, and then the trustees meeting, you'll get to see some trustees from the, some of the other community colleges. And as I said, it's a day trip. You'll be back before it gets dark.
Yeah.
Consider it.
All right, thank you, trustee Sutton. If there are no other questions, a call for a motion to accept the report, please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next on our agenda this evening, we have the approval of the consent agenda. And with that, could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
I have a question on consent actually too, and I didn't know if I needed to do this in the, with the finance, with report or not. But I noticed item one, we partic, we purchased a vehicle in, in Leavenworth, $96,000. And while we, that is our service area, I was just concerned why we purchased in Leavenworth. And even more concern is item number nine, we spent $75,000 on vehicles in Topeka. Why are we going to Topeka for vehicles? So those are just questions I have, and other than that, I'm standing approval of it.
So the $75,000, because I had questions on that as well, our, our maintenance vehicles, facilities vehicles are, are very old and rusty and needing replaced. Vehicles are, it's standardly expensive. I was shocked at the price, but those are regular stock trucks. They, we did an RFP, and that company was the low bidder by several thousand dollars. So if we can buy locally and have that price matched, we are really more than happy to do that. These are two vehicles that were purchased by another company and were not picked up, so they had an additional discount to it. So it was in the best interest of the institution to save those thousands of dollars and, and purchase these two vehicles. The first vehicle you mentioned, I'd have to look that up, because I don't have that in front of me right at this moment.
Okay.
Those were police cars, I thought.
Is it the police? It's a, yeah, and it's all built.
Police cars, yes.
Yeah, and it, and it comes fully built and delivered. So there's only a few companies that do that.
Yes, and, and I wasn't, I wasn't concerned about the price, because I know cars are very expensive. I was concerned for the places that we purchased them, but you've explained that, so.
Yeah, they went out to bed.
I understand, okay.
Yep.
And just a quick clarification, the two police vehicles, the first one is the administration vehicle for police, which the chief and deputy chief share. And then the Dodge Ram is a truck, because they have a trailer that they pull for emergency operations, and that will be assigned to a sergeant. So I just wanted to clarify, it's not your typical four-door type police vehicle.
Okay.
But they're replacing vehicles that exist.
But there's only a few places that do that type of work.
That's exactly right.
Yeah, so we've got to go to where they are.
So are we able to tag on to a...
State contract?
A state contract? Yeah, that's, that's probably the other, the other dynamic is...
Right.
Since we're a government entity, we can tag on to, for example, Kansas Highway Patrol's contract to get a better per-unit price.
That's right. All the police agencies kind of go through a cooperative agreement. So for the police vehicles, that's absolutely right. And as Dr. Moser said, for the facilities vehicles, we did get the bids from multiple places. And anytime we can, you know, buy, at least in Kansas, if not locally, we're always going to do that. But that's, this is where they were available.
Okay, thank you. That's just good information to know, that's something that the community will want to know. Because, you know, we could get Dean, especially, why do you go all the way to Topeka with all the things that are surrounding?
Exactly.
Now it's on record, and they know why we did that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Dr. Keneven, I don't know if you're seeing the same thing that I've been seeing out there when it comes to vehicle purchases, but sometimes you're months or even a full year out on some of these orders.
Yes.
So to be able to pick up a couple of vehicles that happen to not be picked up like that is, is good luck for us, actually.
It is. We actually have two standard police vehicles that were ordered last year, and we still haven't gotten them. And we had to re, kind of reorder them. It's, there's been a huge delay when it comes to more typical police vehicles.
Yeah.
And, and Chief Putzke has a plan. You know, the, the college had not replaced police vehicles for many, many years. And he's got a plan to try and replace those vehicles on a cycle. And it's not as much about the number of miles that are driven, because we're obviously pretty compact. But police vehicles, it's based on the idle time for the engine, and it has to do, and that impacts the value, which is a big issue for police departments, because the vehicle's always running. It may not be, you know, going a lot of miles, but it's always running. So he's done an excellent job in analyzing which vehicles need to be replaced when. And then those dollars, when we get rid of the old vehicle, those dollars then are now being put into a fund that's available to then replace vehicles as they're needed. So we're trying to kind of do a replacement program and, and try to capture those dollars in a, in a fiscally responsible way.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, thank you for answering those questions for us. Believe we had a motion. I don't know if we got a second on that, though, to approve.
We did get a motion.
I think we did.
Move approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you, trustee Ash. Should we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. All right, that brings us to the student senate report this evening with our student senate president, Ms. Daniels, and student senate vice president, Ms. Barnes.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
How are you all today?
Good.
Good? Good. So in terms of updates for student senate, we will be meeting this Friday, March 2nd. It will be on Microsoft Teams this week. We will be discussing a lot of different updates and developments happening during student senate, a lot of events that we're planning, so we're excited for that. It'll be at 2:15 PM on Microsoft Teams again. There is also the student advisory, student engagement advisory council. We will meet tomorrow at 10:00 AM. Mark Neslin has given us the appointment date. So it will be me, myself, and Mark Nelson, and the chairman for the committee. And then we have our officials that will also have been elected, and then our other student engagement representatives that will be there as well. And we will be discussing some of the travel policies, how funds are allocated for those, and things like that, that are really excited to actually have this committee, so, committee so we can get started and get those things together for the next academic years to come.
Thank you, Eden. Moving on, we will also, student senate is also planning to partner with a new club called Blue Unit to host our Easter egg hunt. That's part of our Easter egg celebrate, our Easter celebration. The event will take place sometime next week, and more information will come for that. Student senate is also planning the end-of-the-year bash. The prospective date for that bash is sometime between the late April and early May, possibly early May. And more information is also to come on that as well. And then additionally, student senate is also planning our activities for the centennial celebration on April 13th. So do we have any questions?
I'll say, welcome back from spring break, and I know it'll probably be mentioned later, but I think everyone needs to, to know this right now. President Elizabeth Daniel, New Century Pathway scholar, she had the highest score in the whole state of Kansas. Now, that's something we need to be talking about. That needs to be on our website, and she will be recognized...
Thank you.
...when we go to Hutch, I mean Junction City.
BTK, yeah.
So, and as far as I know, no one from this college in all these years has ever had the highest in the whole state of Kansas. So that's something for us to shout about. Some of us will be there, Phi Theta Kappa Celebration, and we will be very proud to support you.
Thank you.
So I, I thought it's important to say while you're standing there now versus, I think it's in the academic report, but that's wonderful. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You make us mighty proud.
Thank you.
And she will also be going, is it Louisville?
Oh, yes. Yeah, Louisville, Kentucky.
Louisville, Kentucky, with Dr. Tucker to receive accommodations there as well. So it'll be a great trip. Lots of hard work paying off.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Great to hear about the upcoming events as well. Thank you. And if there's no questions, do we have a motion to approve the report?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Congratulations. Great to hear about the upcoming events as well. Thank you. And if there's no questions, do we have a motion to approve the report?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, ladies.
Motion carries. Thank you. That brings us to the President's Report with Dr. Moser. Thank you.
All right, very good. Thank you. And with the announcement of Liz's wonderful accomplishments, I'll move on from there. It's been a very busy month. It seems to get busier and busier each spring semester. So, but lots of good things going on. A little bit of a teaser here, and then I, I think Vice President Pope will give you a little more of a teaser. But congratulations are also in order to KC KCC's music program, students and faculty. They've had another very successful year in winning awards. And I'll leave it with that. Currently, we have multiple grant initiatives that are in the works. One that was brought up most recently and brought to our attention very purposefully through the American Association of Community Colleges and their Workforce Development Division. And I used to sit on the AACC National Commission for Workforce Development for six years. So when they were looking to do a project, I was lucky to be called and with the work that we're doing with Panasonic, which is very exciting and conversations taking place across the country. AACC has a million dollars which they can give in discretionary. It's not competitive, but they'll pick five institutions to award $200,000 each. There's about 26 months left for that project to be developed, and we will be working with AACC and Panasonic in redeveloping our industrial maintenance technology. It's a commerce certificate right now. It's not a college certificate, so it's eligible for workforce aid reimbursement. But with the apprenticeship opportunities that are available, we're going to take and rework that IMT program into an apprenticeship model, because right now it's all taught at the college campus Monday through Thursday night. And then we're also going to be reworking the number of credit hours for those classes so it aligns with the first semester of the AET program so that they're not having to retake classes because credit hours don't align, et cetera. So we're very happy and pleased to be really hand-selected by AACC for this money. And we're working with the VP for Operational Excellence at Panasonic right now for that statement of work. We'll also connect that with the Kansas Department of Commerce and their apprenticeship office, who has some additional money available that we'll be able to put towards these efforts. So that's really exciting. We'll get more information probably in the next couple of weeks. But really pleased with the work everyone's done to be picked for that discretionary funding opportunity. We'll also have, it was announced at the state level this year, we received approximately $900,000 for apprenticeship work to get apprenticeships going. So we've been working diligently on that. We'll have that same $900,000 coming this next year. We're not sure if it will come the following year because there's conversations and a little push and pull between Kbor and the commerce on how that money, where it should live, how it should be distributed, et cetera. And it'll be more guidelines placed onto being a registered apprentice office or institution, which we are. And we're expanding our programs in which we're doing registered apprenticeships and then expanding even further to youth registered apprenticeships. So more to come on that. I've mentioned this before, but KC KCC was selected as, by the University of Kansas Health System Partner, it can now, is the Partner in Excellence Award. It'll be at their Hall of Fame, so that's on June 5th. So I really had the honor to go down and do the video for that Hall of Fame event this morning. So that's, that's pretty exciting, and again, great way for the college to be recognized in our community. I think we have one ticket left for, to fill the tables. That's currently reserved for a board member. So if you haven't signed up and you want to go, please let Cheryl know. And if it's not filled, then we'll open that up for other individuals. So we'll have a table of 10 at that event. Want to really give a thank you and a big shout out to about 20 people that came out last Thursday afternoon. And we did more work on the nature trail and getting that cleaned up. Cleaned up the classroom area quite a bit. Brought out facilities and PD worked together and brought out a couple wood chippers. So we got all the cut-down limbs and everything run through the wood chippers, and we'll make the trail with that, and we'll continue to get that going. And it's really going to be a nice place. It's going to start greening up really soon and get very, very full. So we thought we'd take advantage of one last weekend before everything explodes with the green. So thank you to everyone who came out and, and, and worked really from about 11:30 to 5:00 o'clock. So we got a lot of work done. It was great. Some downtown updates, and I'm sure I'll miss a few for the Dr. Keneven will be able to add to. Again, very active. The demolition continues. We are continuing to wait on estimates for the buttresses for the basement walls that are going underneath the sidewalk towards State Avenue. The engineers have looked at that. They've, they've filled out the design. So we'll end up pouring some concrete buttresses perpendicular to that and then take off the sidewalk and be able to pack that down so that that dirt is nice and solid. May need some additional peering on the outside of those walls. So just kind of waiting for some more details to, to move forward with that. So you may see those southern walls stay there for a while with the pile of rubble because if we pull those away, then the sidewalk will cave in and State Avenue might slip into our property, which we really don't want State Avenue in their property. We did have approval with the plat that went to the Planning Commission last Monday, which takes the multiple properties and it combines it into the one under the name of Kansas City Kansas Community College. It also vacates the alley. So the college will own the entire city block. I made a mistake in my update to the trustees. It wasn't the full commission, but it was the Planning Commission. So this next full commission meeting, it will go, it'll be on the consent agenda because it was voted for unanimously by the Planning Commission. We got the lease finalized for the Willow Gill Center. Greg Gohean and his group working with the Unified Government. And we were just tying up some loose ends related to snow removal and some exterior maintenance. Be glad to have that. PGAV, our architects, are wrapping up a final illustration for how the historic, excuse me, the historical elements from the church will be reutilized in the community church conference room. We should, we all should receive those by the end of the night, tonight. Cheryl's setting up meetings with the Historical Design Preservation Board, a subset of the Historical Landmarks Commission in the next two weeks so we can share these new designs because the building is a different shape. The roof heights are different, so the trusses are the main item that's a change on that drawing. And then hopefully we will receive their approval and maybe some edits. And then that will go to the Historical Landmark Commission on April 1st to get a release of the Certificate of Appropriateness, which will allow us to get the final building permit that's contingent upon that. So we have teams working on that. We have teams working on the final development plan, the FDP, to get that to the commission by the end of this month and a request to expedite construction. Usually you don't get a building permit until you have your FDP approved. We're asking to get a building permit for footers and foundations prior to our FDP approval. And then once we get our FDP approval, then we can get approval for vertical construction. So trying to keep everything super tight so that we can get occupancy of the building and start moving in FFNE by October 31st, 2025. Soft launch in '26, and the heavy programs in, we'll move equipment in the summer of '26. Also have the engineering and mechanical drawings, engineering drawings off to BPU, One Gas, and the UG for donations in kind. And I think they'll be fairly significant in their offerings. We also have, Dr. Baylog got the 2025 Congressional Discretionary Spending Request submitted through Merchant McIntyre to Senator Moran's office last Friday. And that'll be for an additional set of AET equipment, which will actually stay at tech. So, because we're going to need two AET labs to meet the community needs, and Panasonic is just very excited of working with KC KCC as their primary choice. So I'll let Dr. Keneven add to anything that I forgot there. And then lastly, let's see here. Oh, a couple reminders real quick. Marvin Windows, we have the meet and greet on the 21st at 8:00 AM, the venue at Willow Creek, if you're planning to attend that. The baseball new turf dedication, March 28th at 12:40, right before the 1:00 game up at the baseball field. The, that night, the 28th, is the Celebration of the Century Community Dinner, so I hope you're able to make that. Invites are out. We have about 120-plus people who will be attending. So that'll be a great night with culinary from our students and jazz and corral performances from our students as well. And lastly, to wrap up, yesterday, we received notice that we received the 2024 Congressional Discretionary Spending Request of $2.987 million through Representative La Turner's office, which is for, that one's for brick and mortar, for the partner building, for the dual enrollment classrooms and offices where we'll be working with USD 500 and our other school districts to trying to get as many diploma plus certificate students as we can to help them get an advancement on, on their education. So that brings our total now to approximately $63,187,000, which is 105% of our total goal of $60 million. 102% from our updated goal of 60, oh, $62 million. We have about $7 million in asks and pending items. The college's original goal was to raise $48 million, and this brings us to approximately So really doing well, and a lot of people working hard to make that happen. So great job by everyone. And with that, I'll conclude my report.
Well, thank you, Dr. Moser, and definitely great news to hear about Representative La Turner's success in getting that passed for us. We definitely appreciate his support as well as our, our senators and other representatives. I think that shows exactly why it's important for us to continue to go and visit with them and share the successes of the college and our needs and develop those relationships with them. It's definitely paying off for us.
On your tables for the board members, the Newsweek article came out, so we have it flagged for you. I think it's on page 49, so really good national publication as well.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Moser? If not, do we have a motion to accept the report, please?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have the Executive Vice President's Report with Dr. Scott Baylog. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. As I do monthly, I will share some comments focused on our institution strategy, our partnerships, and operations, and execution. I do want to take personal point of privilege to note that I'm approaching a year here on the job, which is hard to believe. But when Trustee Ash mentioned about the PTK recognition event in Junction City, I was, that was day on the job number three for me last year. And so thank you for, thank you all for your support, and I appreciate the opportunity to work with each of you. As it relates to our strategy, you've heard the President mention earlier about the work that we're doing to consolidate, reorganize, and restructure the cabinet. That really puts us in a position for the future to operate more effectively and efficiently as a cabinet. And these hires are big for us moving forward as we're restructuring and reorganizing. These are tone-setting hires for us, for our cabinet, and for the rest of the college. And so we're putting a lot into that to make sure that we get these hires and get them right. In addition to that, we continue to review data tools and systems. Come to you month after month and mention that this is a big acquisition for us to identify the right solution to support our data needs here at the college so that we can create a data layer that will democratize the use of data across our college. We've been really fortunate to have a great SIS ERP partner in Illution, and we operate leveraging Illution colleague. And I'll just note that Chris Fontno, our account manager from Illution, is here today with us for this board meeting, and we appreciate their continued support. The President also mentioned about our congressional earmark request that we submitted this past week to Senator Moran's office. That will support the doubling of the amount of equipment and the diversification of the types of equipment that we will have supporting our automation engineer technology program. Why is that a big deal? It's a big deal because it supports the needs of Panasonic. We'll be running cohorts simultaneously at our Technical Education Center and at our Downtown Center. What it also does in diversifying our equipment is it positions us to support the needs of other advanced manufacturing companies, right, that have those, that have needs similar to Panasonic. So right now, we're currently working with about 14 partners via our relationship with KC and the chapter of the Federation for Advanced Manufacturing Education. We anticipate that number to double within the next year, in addition to the needs that we are supporting with Panasonic Energy. In submitting that request, it was a $2.9 million request to Senator Moran's office. I just want to take a moment to, to share with you the letters of support that we received for that request. Because oftentimes, that can just go overlooked as part of the process, but I think it's telling as to the level of support that we have for our program and for the center, and also the partnership with Panasonic. We received a letter of support from Lieutenant Governor David Toland, from the, the Kansas City Area Development Council, from the KC Chamber, Wyandotte Economic Development Council, from the KC Chapter of Fame, and from Panasonic Energy and their Vice President for Operations Excellence, Walt Miller. Those are heavy hitters. Those are big names in the metro area. And so it's, again, it speaks to the work that we're doing and the support that we have and the recognition from those entities. As it relates to partnerships, we continue to work diligently to develop relationships and strategic partnerships benefiting the college, but more importantly, our students. Two worth noting, one is, we had a great conversation last week with the President and the Provost at the University of St. Mary on articulation partnerships, pathways between our institution and the university. In addition, just this morning, we met with the superintendents from Leavenworth and Lansing School Districts in their interest in working more closely with the college on career and technical education pathways, really helping to introduce their students to career opportunities. In addition to that, Serendipity presented an opportunity to continue conversations with KSU Aletha at the Tech Hubs announcement last week, where I attended and representing the college, gave us the opportunity to continue conversations with Ben Wolf, the dean and CEO of the KSU Aletha campus, developing articulation agreements, moving students through a continuum, starting in high school through KC KCC and on to the university where they can continue to pursue degrees. Panasonic is particularly interested in this continuum, moving students Panasonic is particularly interested in this continuum, moving students through advanced manufacturing curricula here at the college and on to degree programs that would position them for management opportunities and engineering, more sophisticated engineering opportunities with the company. Finally, as it relates to operations and execution, again, you've, I'll just mention the amount of time and energy that went into developing this new structure and the reorganization of our cabinet. And finally, we talked a little bit about it during executive session. But as it relates to reporting to you, I just want to thank Information Services for their support in helping us to create a new tool so that we can tighten up our reporting process to you each month. That's something that we want to automate. And so in the future, you'll receive reports from each one of the cabinet members that's a bit tighter and in its production. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Baylog. Any questions or comments from the board?
We're rolling.
Indeed. And it feels good.
Can't believe it's been a full year already, but thank you for everything that you've done.
It's hard to believe.
There are no questions, could I have a motion to accept the report, please?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to the Vice President of Academic Affairs Report with Mr. Jerry Pope.
Thank you very much. So just a couple of things. I tried to highlight some of them in the highlights section, but just a couple of other items. Dr. Todd Miles, who just earned his doctorate very recently, gave a presentation, an academic symposium, and I have to believe this was the title of his dissertation. I'm not 100% sure, but I think so. "Balancing Students' Cognitive Load in Instruction Design to Ignite Academic Achievement in the Fire Academy." So I always like to highlight, you know, presentations and academic symposium that faculty are doing here on campus. Also, Todd, or at the college, it happened to be on the main campus, but at the college. Tom Grady was able to present at the Kansas City Professional Development Council. So we're, we're kind of all over the city, which I think is really a good thing. So both Dr. Mosier and Trustee Sutton stole some of my thunder, but I won't hold it against them. And I'm glad that Trustee Sutton recognized Elizabeth Daniels while she was here.
Yes.
So there's some more information in the board report, but just congratulations to her. And I know Stacy Tucker, who's the director of the honors program, said that was the first student since she's been here and director. So it's been quite a while since we've had a student have that honor. And like you said, I don't think we've ever had one that was the highest in the state.
State of Kansas, yeah.
Congratulations to Elizabeth and all the hard work she's done and the support that, you know, we've been able to provide her here at the college. Our music department, the Chamber Choir, directed by John Stafford, they went to the Kansas Music Education In-Service Workshop down in Wichita, so they were able to perform. A number, for a number of years, we were never given that option or that accolade to perform on the stage as part of that. And we've been doing that regularly since, I don't know how many years, but for a while. So that's a really good accolade for them and it's a really strong presence here in the state of Kansas. We even had two instrumental music students that performed in the band there, so congratulations to them. Tracy Delevue, who's a professor of speech communications, was able to present also at the KC PDC, the Development Council, Professional Development Council. And the high school culinary team participated over Johnson County, and they won the gold medal. So I always like to, you know, say that when we can compete against Johnson County and win a gold medal. I think that's really a nice thing. The 2020 Leadership Tour for high school students, so we, about 50 students attended that over at the Technical Education Center. So really, really nice event for them. Tina Belt, who's our new mortuary science instructor. We identified some Perkins funds for some instructors to go to model institutions to kind of see what they're doing and see what they can bring back to us. And our HVAC instructor did that last semester, and I think there's some that I'm missing, but Tina did that. And Dr. Bohm, the dean, showed me all the notes that she took. So she was very excited to learn some things and bring those back to us. Videographer in the Administrative Office Professionals Classroom, so we'll have, I think we'll have maybe that video up sometime, kind of highlighting that program. I had the opportunity to introduce the Psi Beta Induction Ceremony. So this is the first year that we've had a psychology honor society. So we had that induction ceremony and our trust, our new trustee was there for that. Dr. Scruggs Andreu. Was I close?
Exactly.
Okay, good. I practiced that a little bit. So we see some pictures there and it was very nice to have you there, so we appreciate that. And then one last thing, and this is hot off the press. It's from Darren Elliott, our debate coach, who is in a tournament, the Parliamentary Debate National Championships in Salt Lake City. So I'll just read this. They won the Community College National Championship for sweepstakes. They took fifth overall with all of their wins being against four-year universities. And their only losses to the national, was to the national champion, or the national champion Cal, sorry. And then to Berkman and Berkeley and Whitman, who was in the final four. So they only lost to the four-year universities that were in the final four. And then he was selected to be one of the seven judges for the national championship final round. So congratulations to our debate team and the work that they're doing as they're headed back from Salt Lake City. Or maybe they're already back, I'm not sure. I think they are because I meet with Darren tomorrow. So that's it, just some highlights that are going on in Academic Affairs, some great work for the students as well as the faculty in the, in the area. And I'll take any questions, if there are any.
I have more comments than anything. I think we'd be remiss if it didn't come from the board as condolences for the family of Ernest Evans, the adjunct faculty that we lost in the political science area.
Thank you so much for.
The family needs to know that they weren't just a number or a body. We recognize that. Even if they're adjunct, they're still our employee. And the other thing was just to say congratulations to Wiley Wright on his retirement. I think it was, it was last fall, we were in, at the Association of Community College Trustees and someone, I think I reported on it before, who was a trustee in Nebraska, was a mortuary science student here and spoke highly of Wiley. So congratulations on your retirement and thank you for all you've done with this program. And you were talking about all that information that Tina Belt got. And, and I just kind of chuckled because I wrote down, what's a green burial? And I said I was going to tell you. Well, I don't expect you to answer that, but that was in one of the things that she learned about different funeral arrangements now. And one was a, as I said, a green burial. And so if you don't have to answer, when I see Wiley before he leaves, if I see him before he leave, I'll ask him, what's a green burial?
It's, it's interesting you should ask that question. First of all, thank you so much for bringing up both Ernest and Wiley. I had that down to say and I just, I just didn't say that, but you're absolutely right about him. I heard some wonderful stories from Janice, who used to, Janice Spillman, who used to work up at the Leavenworth Center and knew him pretty well, so I really appreciate that. And then I had a former minister of mine, I still play church music, and I saw her and she wanted to have a green burial. And so just a week and a half ago at another memorial service, I learned about a green burial. So it's, I think you're just kind of shrouded in, in a shroud kind of thing that will just decay into the earth and you're just, you're just kind of put in the earth, so no casket and whatever. So I'll find out more information, but it's just kind of interesting that that came up.
Yes. I know I can ask too many questions.
No, I love it.
It seems like, but when I saw green burial, I'm thinking environmental.
Yes, that's absolutely what it is.
Consists of, all right, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Move approval of the report?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Vice President of, no, not the Vice President of Academic Affairs, the Vice President of Student Affairs and Enrollment Management Report with Dr. Chris Myers.
There you go. Hello again. I don't know how to compete with a green burial conversation, but I'll discuss some of the great stuff that's happening within the division. Couple of things I do want to highlight from my report. We are through essentially the enrollment season for the spring semester now that the second eight-week spring session has started. Overall, head count is up 3.68% compared to previous spring. So that's total of 161 additional students compared to last spring. So we're very excited about that. Crowd hours is still holding very steady, too. Couple of things to make note of there. As you recall, we've been very much more intentional in terms of our recruitment efforts for the spring, the second eight-week session of the semesters through marketing efforts with Chris Greenshop and other folks. We received over 400 applications for admission for the spring semester after the first week of school. So I think we've really proven that we're more than just a three-point entry. You know, summer, springs, summer, spring, fall start, but really that we're really personifying our access mission in terms of entry into the college. And, and, and you don't necessarily need to start at the first semester. So we're going to keep working on those efforts. The only thing that we did this spring that was new is for all of our admitted students who didn't enroll, we texted them shortly after the semester started and we saw some significant interest and gains on that. Maybe not necessarily for enrolling for the spring semester, but making plans so they can start in the summer or fall, too. So a lot of good stuff happening there on the enrollment side. And then in May, I'll be coming to the board with a full Strategic Enrollment Management Plan update. So I'll be providing more details and data related to that. Couple of other things I did want to highlight. I have been mentioning a lot of our additional efforts in terms of addressing the financial aid crisis, as we like to speak, in terms of the federal government and the FAFSA process. As of right now, we still haven't received our records for the upcoming academic year. They're still on target for the end of this month, so we're getting pretty tight on there. We're starting to receive test records, though, so we're being able to test the system. And it's fortuitous that our friends from Illution are here also because they're having the same challenges trying to program a system with no guidance from the Department of Education. So it's going to be very tight. Our workshops that we're doing for folks with our financial aid staff at all of our locations is going very well. In addition to our partnerships with Trio ELC that does historically the work here. We did receive hot off the press today. The federal government did provide through the Department of Education opportunity for schools to ask for additional resources. We specifically asked for technical resources in terms of getting our system programmed. And we received notice that we should be receiving information about how to tap into them to help us with the technical, logical side of getting all this stuff rapidly put into the system very soon. So pleased to hear that we got response. They've had at least, what, last I heard, they had over 500 requests from institutions. And so we're, we'll get an email saying here's the next steps in terms of getting technical assistance. So we're making the best of it in many ways, in terms of all the things that are happening with the financial aid process. We also have our Next Student Success Workshop. This is part of our Title III programming in terms of strengthening institutional programs, guided pathways and developmental education. That next workshop will be this Thursday. This is a continuation of the one that we had in the spring with that team. And then their theme is it takes a village. And so really, it takes a village to create student success. So it's about how we create that holistic student success framework across the college and continue to do the good work in terms of retaining and persisting students that we saw in the spring enrollment reports. Another thing I'm really happy to report on is we're seeing more collaborations between the Department of Athletics and Student Engagement or Former Student Activities Office. We did not, we did compete against Johnson County on the basketball court. We didn't do so well in the regional tournament. But they have started to do more partnerships in terms of activities. One of the things that they did for the first round of the conference games at Metropolitan Community College was host bus trips. And we had about 70 students or so that participated in that to go to the game. Had a great showing there. So really proud of the, the men's and women's basketball team. They had 21 seasons despite a lot of obstacles this year in the field house. And the spring sports are well underway and we're looking forward to seeing May if you get the baseball field ribbon cutting very soon.
One minute.
Everything is commencement plan is still underway. We're still having commencement. Everything's going very well. The team was at Jones Mercy Park last week for a walkthrough. And we'll start to, you'll start to see more information being posted on the website through April about, for students, about how to, to, how to get set up for that. But everything's looking very good. We hope to announce our speaker this week. Working through a list of potential speakers. But happy to, happy to have everyone out at Jones Mercy Park, is here for a great commencement ceremony. And the other thing, in your board report, if you have the opportunity, if you look at the upper bound part in the section, they do a really neat program with their students. Earlier this year, they partnered with a group that developed a music video. So that, so as one of their workshops with the Upper Bound Academy students, they spent two days working with a music producer to create the original rap video that's available on YouTube. And it's pretty, pretty fun to watch and see the creativity that the Upper Bound students were doing. So with that, I'm happy to conclude my report and take any questions or comments.
I'm glad you mentioned something about commencement because looking under the register's report, it had graduation applications, and I wasn't sure how to really interpret that. It says February, as of February 2023, we had 270 applications. And in February 2024, we had 12 applications. Are we changing up or students deciding not to walk or?
We're a little late compared to last year in terms of getting the graduation application for our. It used to be more of a paper process and with the Illution, we actually set it up so they go, ah, I could do that. And it was a little delayed, but you'll see those numbers pick up in the next month's report. So they've had, that came out first of March or so.
We're going to be in that big, nice facility out there. We need our students to be there so we can celebrate them.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions for Dr. Myers? If not, can I have a motion to accept the report, please?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next, we have the Vice President Educational Innovation and Global Programming Report with Dr. Fabiola Ryobi.
Hello, everyone. Great to see everyone. We're so excited because educational innovation and global programming is on the move. As you know, that area includes adult and continuing education, high school partnerships, international scholar services, online education services, and workforce innovation. And so we are excited because the governor actually, the governor claimed that February 28th was Adult and Continuing Education Day in Kansas. And Stephanie Pritchard, the Assistant Director of Adult Education, was actually in Topeka during that time. And we had a great presentation by one of our GED, one of our ESL instructors, Patricia Reaver, who was teaching on reading ESL in the classrooms. So we're just excited that our people are getting out there. They're making the case and showing the cause for support as to why our programs are important. You heard the president say that we're going to be acknowledged into the University of Kansas Healthcare System this June in their National Hall of Fame for the work that we're doing with them in GED. And that partnership just expanded to include ESL programming. So this is great. In our high school partnership, we have a great student from Turner High School who actually received a scholarship in order to help her get her tools that she needs as she's pursuing her cosmetology certificate with us here at the college. And it just shows the college's commitment to our technical and career education focus with our students. In addition to that, our high school partnership team has been really on the ground with understanding where dual and concurrent enrollment is going, attending not only regional and local conferences, for example, at Johnson County Community College, but really having a strong virtual presence to understand how we can start integrating more technology into our offerings to have a greater and expanded reach. So kudos to the team for doing that. Not to mention, in our international services and global programming, the numbers are just coming in. We're looking to expeditiously process applications more rapidly. We're getting a lot more interest with students from all over the globe. I could say to you that we have a region of interest, but we don't. The students are literally coming from all over the world. We did an assessment and right now, we have about 25 students coming from Kenya alone that are here on our campus. I know, right? That's what I said, right? Exactly, wow. And the reality is they're understanding that a community college education is a competitive education at a competitive price. And they're seeing the value and they're seeing the value here at KC KCC. When we speak to some of our international scholar student workers, they also stress the fact that, the fact that we have housing is a big proponent for them as to why they choose this college and of course, our athletics. So kudos to our athletics teams and everything that they're doing to support that agenda. Our global programming had a great opportunity to attend the AIIA Conference in Washington, DC, where we heard from the keynote speaker, Dr. Chavez, and I love what he said. Because he stressed that if we're not leveraging international education to bridge barriers so that we could have a world that has less war, has less damage to the climate, brings more cooperation, more cultural competence, then what is education? And the more that I think about this, I just have to stress, thank you to Dr. Mosier for having the vision, not only to bring me here. not only to bring me here, but to stress the fact that global competency is the skill that we need in order to get our students real world ready. So kudos for everyone for that. As we're looking to online education services, we are transitioning to Blackboard Ultra. And one of the things that our faculty champions are excited about is the AI generative type of support that is in there. You heard Jerry Poe said it, you know, our very own Tom Brady. Yeah, no, Tom Brady, I always do that. I swear, I gave him like five championship rings in the NFL. But our very own Tom, not only did he present on AI, but he's actually partnering with us to start thinking about what is our AI policy going to be here at the institution? And what do we need to get ahead of in order to make sure that we're leveraging that to inform pedagogy and leveraging that to make sure that our students are real world ready? So we're really excited about that. In addition to that.
One minute.
In addition to that, in workforce innovation, as well as the entire, I guess, educational innovation and global program team, we partnered with Kaufman and we're going to be having five interns this summer through the Kaufman Pro X Summer Internship Program. And we have five of them coming here at KCKCC ranging from ages, don't kill me, Dr. Moser, ranging from ages sixteen to eighteen. So we're excited to see what these youth have to say about just academia, higher ed and things that we can be doing in the different areas. Kudos to some of you who were actually in attendance at our AAT FAM Open House. That was a success. We had over a hundred and twenty-five people come into the doors. What I loved about it is that it wasn't students alone, there were families here. Families looking to better understand what the new opportunities are and what can KCKCC do for them to help transform their academic journey and academic trajectory. That is what I got for you. Any questions?
On the move.
On the move.
Interesting in you talking about the AI and online education because that was one of my questions. As we go more into the AI world, will it help cut down on, on pleasureism? Because now there's so, there's various softwares out there that professors can use to, to track it. But now with AI and it's so sophisticated, will we be able to use that? Will faculty be able to use that to help or is it going to be harder to catch now because AI is so sophisticated?
You know what I love about your question is that we constantly step into the space of kind of like barriers. And how we're looking to include AI in the work that we're doing is more as a thought partner for our students, right? Because AI is based on human intelligence. And so teaching them, how are they promoting and putting in their own prompts? So that they could be partners with actually kind of like, if you were to say crowdsourcing information, right? And so that they could be partners and have a partner right there with them going through the process. So we're looking at ways of how we can inform instructors to help use and leverage that as a tool for their students and empower them in the work that they're doing. Yes, there are ways based on curriculum design and project design and how AI has to be used. And there are also opportunities for the student to actually just self-identify that for a specific assignment, they use AI in support of. But we're really looking to see how we can use it as a partner, particularly when an instructor or someone else is not there for the student to be on that journey with them.
Awesome, thank you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I look forward to hearing more information and maybe a future report on the AI issue too. I know that's the, the new hot buzzword around so many industries right now, but especially education as we try to look for ways to both leverage and protect against misuse in some cases. So in fact, I've, I've heard from some colleagues that it's, it's also become an issue for those who are writing their papers a hundred percent themselves, but may accidentally trigger a detection of AI just because they're doing certain academic writing. So it's interesting as there continues to be developments there, what we will form policy around, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Not, could I get a motion to accept the report, please?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Great, thank you so much.
Motion carries, thank you. Next, we have our Chief Marketing and Institutional Image Officer, Ms. Chris Green. Good evening.
Good evening. We're going to start today with a video of our biomanufacturing program. As you know, we have been systematically creating video for our programs. And I think we're up to nine videos for different programs. And so tonight, we'll look at that first.
KCKCC has a great biomanufacturing program and I really love it.
Biomanufacturing is a type of manufacturing where we use living cells to manufacture our product. Vaccines, for example, or the food products like cheese.
I chose to do the program at KCKCC specifically because of the recommendations I've gotten of it. What I like best is the people and the teachers, I feel like they definitely help you learn.
What I like best about this program is how it's really preparing me. I'm thinking of like going into the medical field or something in the lab.
After the completion of this course, students can go into the higher STEM studies or in the biotech programs, or they can get quick jobs in the biomanufacturing industry in our area or elsewhere in the country.
It's so exciting that I get to go into the classrooms and talk to students since I don't get to see them every day and hear their discussion. What was even more impressive to me is all of the students speaking in that video are high school students. So they will already be on their way with their biomanufacturing credential as they start their post-secondary work. In addition, in supporting what we're doing with enrollment, the way these videos do and we're talking about programs, we also have a very exciting partnership with Archer and they have a product called Onward. That product takes, okay, I'm going to go back in time because think about choose your own adventure. When you were in the, the stories where you went, if it's A, turn to page eighty-seven, if it's B, turn to page fifteen. That's what Onward is for our students in a much more advanced and sophisticated way. It asks them who they are and what their journey is in education and then gives them curated content that Archer and KCKCC created together and takes them through the process and addresses issues that may be barriers or areas of lack of knowledge or needed information and it captures their information. So it does lots of things, but it does provide a handholding in that pre-application window of time when we're in inquiries. And if they don't actually click on the apply button, then that program tracks them and dings them and says, hey, we haven't seen you in Onward for a couple of weeks. What questions can we answer you? And it pulls content from their experience into those emails and texts. So it's a great partnership. This is the first time that Archer has approached, or one of the first times they have approached a community college and we're collaborating together to define this process for community college partners across the nation. And that went live on the thirteenth. So on our homepage, you'll see apply and right next to it, you'll see learn more. Learn more is Archer Onward. Also, my office has been doing a lot of party planning. So we hope that you come and join us for the centennial parties. My team has been doing lots of hard work to put that all together. On March twenty-eighth, we have the Celebration of the Century. And we will have our students showcased in many ways as they help us thank the community for their support of us over the last century. So we have volleyball students serving. We have our culinary students preparing the food and we have our jazz students entertaining. So it'll be a great night. Then a couple of weeks later, on April thirteenth, on a Saturday from ten AM to one PM, we're inviting all of our community to our Blue Devil Block Party. We will have a carnival, we'll have a live jazz concert, we'll have health screenings, we'll have free food, we'll have everything, we'll have tours, we have art walks. There is so much going on. I am so thankful for this participation and support of our community on campus as a way to put this event together to celebrate with our greater community. And then finally, this is centennial related too. Our alumni, Jada Johnson, is one of our hundred stories, was part of our national award-winning, national winning team in two thousand and sixteen. And we just recently put her social media story for a hundred stories on and we had over ten thousand interactions with that story. Now, we get that when we pay money to advertise, but this is one of those organic posts that we don't push out at all that received that level of support and it had over fifty shares. So that was a great story of our alum and her experience here. And it always lifts my heart to see those kind of stories be shared in our community. That's my report for this month. Please let me know if you have any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Nice job. And a wonderful magazine coming out too.
Awesome.
Very much looking forward to the centennial dinner, can't wait.
Yep.
All right, do we have a motion to accept the report, please?
So moved.
Have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. And we have the Chief Financial Officer Report with Dr. Shelley Keneven.
Yes, thank you. So we had a good report from trustee Ash on the finance committee. The auditor did present information which is helpful to us in putting together the budget. From his presentation, he had forecast that assessed values will go up thirteen to fourteen percent, but after appeals, it'll be about ten percent. So that gives us a good budget number for our college district in Wyandotte County. So we appreciated that greatly. It's good information to have early in the process. Normally we wouldn't get that and we won't get the final number until June. So that's, but it is very helpful to know that. I also anecdotally have heard from several people who have actually received reduced assessments, which is pretty remarkable, honestly, that their values actually went down. As we all know, housing was having a bit of a anomaly in terms of what's been happening with the market over the last few years. So it'll be interesting to see how that all pans out because there's going to be some increases and some decreases and then it all averages out in the middle. In terms of the financials for this month, the big, the big item is financial aid, which is a revenue we received in September as well as in February. So we receive it as a revenue and then we apply it to the student accounts and then we give refunds for the difference. And as mentioned, and there's a memo in the packet that explains a revision to the financial reports we would like to make because we're in a way double reporting the information because that funding that we get for financial aid is really the student's method of paying tuition and tuition is already reported. So when we've reported, here's the total tuition we think we will get. And then we report, here's the financial aid. It's in essence counting that number twice. However, it is accurate that we are receiving and we are the fiduciaries for financial aid. It has a separate audit, it has to be separately accounted for, there's very strict compliance for those dollars. So it's not that the college isn't managing that money, we are. But we feel like there is a way that we can report it a little better to make it a little more clear. If you have questions, when you read that memo or the details, feel free to ask me in the next few days or talk to Leslie, Stroshine, our controller. And she can certainly help explain the, the change that we're, we're considering.
Why, why the rush on to talk to you?
Yeah, you might know where to find me, so I don't know that I'll be able to hide. So with the business office, I just also wanted to point out that we've taken an approach of trying to look at those spaces that are student facing. One of those is the business office where students come in to make arrangements to pay or to pick up their refund check. And so we're giving that as a refresh, we're updating it, have not received a refresh twenty-plus years. And next on the list is the financial aid office, which I would encourage you, you could go by and look at financial aid and that would be business office before. And then here in a couple of days, we'll finish up with the business office and then you can see after. And you can just really see what a great improvement that is and how much more welcoming it is to our students just by doing the basic, you know, minimum of putting fresh carpet, fresh paint, which we need to keep up with and has been a priority for us. The jewel elevator is still open. It hasn't broken, thank goodness. The humanities one did, but I believe it's back up. Gym floor is one of the projects that you're going to hear a lot about. So this Friday, we are getting a test done of the subsurface below the gym floor and that will give us some information. The gym floor has actually moved a lot over the years and it's actually been leveled a couple of times with a couple of different methodologies and we're talking maybe a fifteen-year span. Sometimes the floor is upheaving, sometimes it's down and dipping. And right now we have a dip in the middle and we have an upheave in the corner. And so we are trying to figure out what is going on with this whole thing. And we, we believe that humidity is a part of the issue, which there's been some things done over the years to address that. But we also think that the subsurface may be an issue. So that's why we're doing this additional testing, which has become quite onerous in terms of we have to cut through a rubber floor that has mercury in it. And so it's a very complicated environmental abatement process. So it's slow moving, but here soon we will have some good information that will inform then the engineers of what options they can provide to us as to how we could permanently fix this problem. So more to come, you'll hear more about that. I think the turf ribbon cutting was mentioned, but mark your calendars for March twenty-eighth at twelve-thirty. It looks beautiful. I always thought the turf looked beautiful when I drive by, but once I got out of my car and walked up to it, I saw how dilapidated it really was. So it, it's a beautiful improvement and it's safer for our athletes. We actually had holes and such that was not safe for not just our athletes, but people coming to our fields. And last thing I wanted to say is that our tech space, we had cleared out the machining space, which where it's not an active program to, so that we could expand the AET program. And so it's getting a new temporary home for the next couple of years until downtown's done. But then that'll be great space for the expanded second space for AET. So wonderful to see a growing program get kind of a new home to use some of the space that we have and be able to really showcase all that equipment that we purchased over the last year. So last day is Friday and I just wanted to thank you all. Thank, I know exactly, to thank you guys for all, all that you do. I mean, as a board, you all give a lot of time. You go to events, you go to statewide meetings, you go to citizen group meetings, homeowners associations and meetings like this. And it's, I'm sure we're going to triple your pay next year, which is a big zero.
Big zero, yeah.
And you do it out of the belief in the system and the belief in the college and the belief in the community. And even though I have been a lifelong Kansas City resident, I knew very little about Wyandotte, about the dot. In fact, everybody kept talking about the dot and I thought, is that a restaurant? What is that? I didn't know what it was. It actually is a restaurant, but it's, that's not what they were talking about. So I will say that I've fallen in love with this community and I'm glad that I'll still be a part of it. I'll be just down the road at the Unified Government and I look forward to joining their team. And just know that I hope our paths will cross and that I'll be on the sidelines cheering you guys on to keep seeing the great things that you guys are doing because it is really remarkable. So I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity to be your CFO. Okay, any questions about my report?
The, the recommendation to, oh, thank you for all you've done. We really appreciate you. You worked tirelessly with the elevators and also when we had issues with the housing, our new housing. This memo for proposed revision of the board report format, it makes sense to me. My question is, does our auditors have an opinion on this?
They're perfectly comfortable with it. What they care about is how we track that money, not necessarily how we report it because they do a separate, a totally separate audit, which is why it really should be in a separate. It, it is in a separate fund, but the way that we report, we roll all our funds up to one report. And so they're perfectly comfortable with it.
All right, thank you.
It won't change the audits at all.
All right, thank you.
I want to say, just like you, I went away for a while, Dot, Wyandotte County is where I was born, my home. But I went away and I come back and I'm like, Dot, what's Dot?
No idea. So you were a, a homegrown one and you didn't know it either, right? Okay. Okay.
Yes. You know, nobody referred to it like that when I was here.
Yeah, it's fun, it's great, I love it. I love the pride, it's community pride is what it is.
It's about thirty, forty years old, maybe, that phrase, that, that sort of.
Non-pleasure.
But, thank you very much, Dr. Keneven, you know. I mean, we've heard reports tonight here, what an impact the student housing has had, for example, drawing students to the college, and, and, you know, a lot of people deserve credit for the way we handle our money and manage our money and keep things, but students are coming here from halfway around the world because it's affordable, you know? And we've always tried to be very intentional in keeping, you know, this cost down and so forth, and you, you know, you are always sensitive to that, and as well as Dr. Mosher and the whole team, but, you know, it's, it's easy to talk about, but it's hard to kind of put in practice and make a, you know, make a commitment to. But, we wish you the best down there at the Unified Government, and we'll be, we'll be seeing you, you know? We'll be crossing paths and seeing you at various meetings and in one thing or another, and just appreciate the commitment that you've shown, you know, to the college. So, you can't be an original Dot, but you can be a semicolon.
I'll move back, it'd be a transplant.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Great report.
Thanks for all you've done.
Yes, I'll echo those sentiments, and just again, thank you, and I'm very happy to be able to say that not only working with you through work with the college, but that I've gained a colleague that hopefully I can, you know, utilize, coordinate, collaborate with in the future. So, thank you, and looking forward to continuing to see you down the road. All right, if there's no other questions or comments, we have a motion to accept the report, please.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next, we have the Chief Human Resources Officer report with Mr. Sam DeLeon, our Director of Employee Relations and also Interim Chief Human Resources Officer. Sorry, that's a new one. Go ahead.
What an amazing act of following. I am proud to follow that. So, Human Resources update the report. As you all know, Human Resources is undergoing some transition, but with transition does come some opportunities. And it was an amazing opportunity to work with Christina, so I have had the opportunity to inherit some of her vision, and I wanted to talk a little bit about some of the things we're doing now, and what we're going to take a look at following our conversations. Christina, I mean, we spent a lot of time together recently. As you all know in Human Resources from your report, you do see that we are presenting a great deal of internal training.
Can you get a little closer to the mic or lift it up, maybe? Yeah.
There you go.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We are performing a great deal of internal training, beginning tomorrow. Tomorrow, we will be in our new employee orientation training. So, what we've already performed is a review evaluating how we're training our new employees. Part of the onboarding process, we began, began looking at it a couple of weeks ago. Anywhere from communication to new employees, how we bring new employees in, and to begin the onboarding process, a little bit more meaningful. So, when our new employees do come onboard, whether they're faculty, staff, or part-timers, full-timers, that they do feel welcomed, much like I did when I came home back to Wyandotte County, which I'm very proud to say. I'm glad to be back, and we want our employees to feel that as well. So, we're taking a closer look at the modules that we've implemented, we have in place that they are an amazing track, but can we take a closer look at training the trainer? And that's what we've already started. We're updating how we deliver our presentations, and it's now time to start implementing a few of those where we have an amazing staff already in place, but how we're going about it. So, to capture the audience, to ensure that we, A, remain compliant, but B, present an onboarding experience that gets them, if they're a manager, how to engage with employees, with courageous conversations, those kind of things, et cetera. So, we're updating our training the trainer, and that's already begun. We're looking at implementing some changes after tomorrow. Our Training and Development Group, led by Sheila Joseph, has continued on and on with other areas, starting with SMART goals and other areas of training, new leaders training, we're continuing on with that. And in the board packet, you see our agenda through April, that we're proud to say. But again, we're also looking at updating how we're going to deliver those and communicate those to begin with. We can't do it all at once, but we can start somewhere, and that's where we're going to begin, because we're going to take, take a closer look at training, onboarding, we've already started, but we're going to continue on that, but also some other areas of compliance. In addition to new supervisor training, we do have some modules, like I mentioned in April, that we want to hear a little bit more from our leaders, where we may be falling a little short, where we're doing well, and where we can actually implement some new, new ideas to remain compliant. And again, getting into that, we're moving forward with additional Title IX training. Prior to me, coming onboard, Christina did engage with a third party, so did Mike Torres. We're meeting with that third party through ATIXA training, through Title IX training, so that has not been overlooked, especially with engaging and working internally here with Dr. Sean Darrett. We're taking a closer look at how we operate, and I am proud to say that I have had some pretty good experiences through the University of Kansas, how we did things there, and how we look to implement that with not only our internal committee here at Title IX, with Title IX program, but how we're documenting and organizing it and remaining compliant. So, that training with the third party is underway, and we're looking to meet as soon as Friday, both myself and Dr. Reem Rashid. So, in addition to the training area, we're also, like I mentioned, we're looking at onboarding a little bit differently. We're also looking at how we recruit and hire. In the upcoming weeks, our HR team will be attending two recruiting fairs. One, as you all know, is through the Tech Center, and fortunately, that is being advertised on 103.3. If you all listen to the radio, it's happening, and thanks to Chris Green, that those, that communication and that advertising and that communication internally is happening, and it's very, hopefully, it's very successful. So, when we do engage with people at the Tech Center, and then the upcoming career fair at Fort Leavenworth, we are connecting with some people that, in our pond locally here, we were able to fish and find some people that we can bring onboard, because as you see in the updated report, we do have a few positions to fill, over forty positions, and they span the area of full-time faculty, full-time staff, part-time, and adjuncts. So, those are the approaches we're taking, and the HR team's excited because we're looking at attending those two career fairs, but putting a plan together throughout the rest of this year, but beginning next year as well, on how we're implementing career fairs, dollars for advertising, but also bringing staff onboard, finding them, and also bringing them in differently. So, that's an update there with recruiting and onboarding.
One minute.
Okay. In conclusion, our Center for Equity, Inclusion, and Multicultural Engagement, there is some transition there as well. So, Dr. Reem Rashid and I are communicating, not daily, but every other day, on that transition, ensuring that both she and I have access to everything that we need to have access to, whether it's systems, whether it's internal communications, whether it's outside parties, that's already underway. So, with that training that I mentioned earlier, we'll also be working closely with Dr. Rashid as well. Reem, Dr. Rashid has also done a great job of organizing events such as the New Americans' Open House and Women's History Month, and those communications have been going out, but if we need to do a supporting, an additional job of getting that information out, we certainly will, along with the AIDS Walk and other events that that group is overseeing. So, with that being said, I wanted to conclude tonight's presentation and entertain any questions, if you all have any.
Any questions from the board? If not?
Okay, thank you all. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
We have a motion to accept the report, please.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Lastly, we have the Chief Information Officer report with Mr. Peter Gabriel. Evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You have my report as part of the packet, but I have a few items that are not on my report that the team's been working on and I would like to mention. The first one is Erez Life, that's our student housing management software, and what we're working on is the integration with Colleague to get that data from Erez Life into Colleague. And we're working on the, kind of the test side of things right now. We ran into a couple of hurdles, but we were able to engage Alucion Support and get past those items. So, once we kind of finish some testing there, we'll move on to making the same changes and, and integration in the production environment. One of the benefits of integrating that into the environment, to the Colleague environment, is to get that information back from Erez Life so that we can automate things, so we can automate door access controls and some other things for the students, you know, enable and/or remove them if need be. We've started some work with the business office to configure and move data out of Excel spreadsheets into, I'll get the name right here, the fixed assets module that's a part of the Colleague system. I don't have the specifics on how the module will help the business office, but in past experience, getting data out of spreadsheets and into Colleague or a database is a good step in the right direction. We're also working with the business office to move over from our current, I'll say, payment or student payment plan processor to a new vendor. The database team is also working with some members in Dr. Meyer's area to configure or reconfigure the advisor assignments to assign advisors to students based on their major. And I know I'm running through it pretty quick here. One thing I did want to mention, I wanted to thank my team and members of facilities for coming together and making the move, the business staff that was mentioned earlier, they moved out of the area to get a remodel and carpet and things. The group came together, moved them to 3406, I believe. It took the group. We pulled tables out of 2152, readjusted those to make those larger tables, facilities moved the tables from 2152 to 3406. The network team came in because there was basically a single network drop in the room for the teaching station, and we added a switch in there to enable the five or six business office individuals to be in there with their computers, their printers, the full setup, and it was, we could take the, kind of take their environment out of the business office and put it in 3406 and not have to make a lot of changes. They have receipt printers that print quick receipts for payments and things for students. They're built into Colleague, so it knows where they're at based on an IP address. So, by us moving that to 3406, we had to move everything to, that way, we didn't have to reconfigure everything. But we moved, they moved all that, monitors. We tried to make it as best experience as we could to move where they were to where they're going to be temporarily, so they had their full setup with their docking stations, monitors, and things like that. And the last thing I wanted to mention was to Dr. Keneven, you will be missed, but I won't miss your, what seems to be an automatic reply to me in email is, did you get three quotes? So, with that, I would be glad to take any questions if you might have.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Gabriel? Not, can we have a motion to accept the report, please?
So moved.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Peter.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is unfinished business, for which we have none scheduled this evening, so we'll move on to new business. And at that time, I would invite the presentation of the college policies presented by Trustee Linda Hoskins-Sutton, Chair of the Board Policy Committee.
All right. Thank, thank you, Chair. And as you know, we are a committee that looks at the policies, but the final decision comes to you. We bring it to the board. And for me, having been on the other side of this as an employee for thirty years here, I know the impact that these policies have. I know we set the tone for the college with our policies, and so, for that, I take this very seriously in what we do in bringing this to you. The first one that we need to look at and see if you have any questions about that we are bringing for your full approval, and I'm assuming we will just vote at the end to accept or whatever we need to do, is the college email. Is there any questions about, excuse me, about the college email? This passed not that long ago, but the, but the college, I mean, the administration, in the interest of looking more professional, wanted to streamline it more. Yes?
Yeah, who's going to help me set up my signature? That's, that's, that's above my skill level there, so. Cheryl? Cheryl?
We may all be relying on Cheryl.
All right.
We'll get you all set up.
Okay. Is there any questions about that one? All right.
I'll, I'll just say that these have, I've seen them in a couple of different situations already. I'm covering some different committees than I normally have in the past through our transition until we have another trustee join, but I did attend the College Senate meeting where these were in front of all of the members, and there were no real concerns or questions. I mean, some fairly easy-to-answer questions, I would say, but no big concerns. I also saw these as part of the Policy Committee for now, and there was some really good conversation about them, but I think we landed on that they had the support of the committee. I will share that Vice Chair Chriswell reached out to me this evening when she realized she would not be able to make it, and she gave me just a couple of questions, either that she would be interested in hearing the reasoning for maybe it wasn't, why it wasn't that way, or maybe proposing a change, and that was to the email signature policy, wondering about first, when it says professional accreditations, if that includes professional certifications. And I, I think that it does, but I just would want to clarify for her. And then, she suggested maybe increasing the maximum number that could be listed up from two to three, and if there was any concerns about that.
Board members, what is your suggestions on that? Her questions are valid and well-taken, and I don't have a problem with what she's asking that we change.
Dr. Mosher, would you have any clarification on just the professional certifications versus accreditations verpage there?
No, I read the same, her questions the same as you do, that they are the same thing. If someone has a professional certification or accreditation as the same item, they may have a specialty recognized certificate in the type of work that they do with like CPAs or information technology specialists, maybe, you know, TIA accredited or COMTIA accredited or IBM certification or those types of things. So, I, those are the same in, in the way I read that.
So, it was professional certifications, and what was the other thing she'd like to see added?
I think that was just asking for clarification and make sure that it did include that, and I think it really comes down to some of those newer organizations that are providing certifications outside of the normal higher education system, some of those professional groups. So, as long as we're comfortable that that includes that, and I think Dr. Mosher's clarified that it does, then I think that takes care of that issue. The other was just asking if they could increase from a maximum of two to three, and I don't know that I've got a problem with that, but I don't know if there was a reason just to keep the total number of lines down to a minimum possibly.
All right. The next one that's on the, the list is free speech, advocacy, and public assembly on college property. This is a new one, and are there any questions or concerns for that one? I would add that, one of my comments I'll make, is that in looking through it again, we've updated from student activities to student engagement. What page is that on? So, I think we probably, we probably need to, to change that before it's ever posted. And the other thing I want to, you know, make certainly clear- And the other thing I want to, you know, make certainly clear on this, that students, faculty, and staff know that this isn't intended to try to limit you. If you are having an event, a speaker or someone, the board is not telling you that you cannot criticize any political party, any political candidate, any politician. I would say that on behalf of the board, if you experience that problem, because that's your, that's your right to say that. You're not being violent. And if, if you do, please let the board know if you are told that you can't criticize a political party, because you can't. And after reporting to the board, if there's retaliation to you, we need to know that. Because as I said in my beginning comments, we set the tone. And if we don't know these things, then you think that we are in support of it. All right. The next policy is college student relief fund. Is there any comments about that one? We did have some discussion about amounts and the process. And what I will say to the office that's in charge of this, we are not going to sit here and tell you how to write your procedures for that. But we do want you to know that our intent is for it to be simple. If a student is needing some type of relief and we have these funds, we don't want them to have to complete a eight, 10-page. We know you need information, but let's let the student have some dignity in asking for a request. And that was the only comment that I had about that one. And the fringe benefits for part-time, non-instructional employees, I think that one needs to be tabled because I think we were told that it was under emergency sick leave. I couldn't find it. And I also think that we, if it's not in there, how will the part-time employees know? And also that, I remember something vaguely, it's been a long time, but something vaguely that we weren't doing something right with our part-time employees regarding their time. And seemed like we had to make it right. We had to pay some arrears or something. So I don't want this taken out. I don't want us to delete that right now. I think we need to do more research on it. In fact, I am going to call capers myself because I receive capers. And then I, I took it upon myself to look at what our neighbors to the south have. And they have many more employees than we do. And they have a benefits matrix, which was very interesting. It just lined out what's, what they pay and what's covered. I think looking at this, which is what I was kind of remembering regarding part-time employees, is that if you're a part-time regular and you work 20 to 29 hours, well, you are eligible for capers. If you're part-time and you work 30 to 39, you are eligible for capers. And this is on the sheet from our, our neighbors to the south. And as I said, they have more employees than we do. And I just, as I said, you know, when we leave, if you have other thoughts or concerns, but I did not want to contact the committee and make us have another little outside meeting because it has to come to the full board, so why not have these discussions here? So Chair and members of the board, I move, I suggest that we approve the college email signature, free speech advocacy, and public assembly on college property, college student relief fund, but the one on fringe benefits that we take our time and do our research. Because even if we don't do it, we don't want to have to come back and have to correct something. I believe in just taking our time and doing it right. Chair.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'm not sure if Mr. DeLeon has additional information, but I know that this was looked into rather extensively. And with Ms. McGee not being here to respond to some of those items that were mentioned, I don't think that we can really have a further discussion on what is and what is not. So there's lots of items that were stated there. So if the board so desires to hold that back, we have never been an administration who wants to rush anything through. So that has never been our intent. So I am happy to pull that back if the board desires to do so.
Well, I will just add to my statement before we went through the policies and say that I'm a little taken back because that part of the conversation, at least about the fringe benefits policy, did not happen during the committee meeting. So in the interest of not surprising each other or the president, I wish that we had that conversation a little sooner, or possibly through email questions could have come up. So at this point, I would just ask if we have a second to that motion. And if not, I have a replacement motion.
And I may add, it wasn't intended to be a surprise in looking at this over the weekend. And as I said, I'm one for not liking, I don't like the sidebar conversations. I like to bring, at this point, after we met, and I said at our meeting that it's not written in stone, it's still up for discussion. Any board member, once he gets here, could say something different, and we would, we would hold it. So as a chair, I'm afforded that same right to have additional information.
Thank you for those additional comments.
So the motion is, she's requesting approval.
Of the?
She's making a recommendation from the committee to pass the first three, to accept the first three policy proposals.
Yes.
And hold the last one.
And yes, yes, let us look at that and make sure, because as I said, I remember something vaguely about that.
I believe there was an amendment to the third one, just with the name of student activities to student engagement.
Yes.
So it would be accepted with that adjustment.
So you're making that recommendation in form of a motion?
Yes.
Okay. I'll second it.
Yes. I move. Yes.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Next on our agenda, I would invite the presentation of an alcohol resolution for the Leadership 2000 Graduation Celebration presented by Dr. Greg Mosier, President. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Chair. As Chair Snard mentioned, this is in relationship to the graduation ceremony and celebration for this year's Leadership 2000 class. As we are aware that Kansas statute prohibits the consumption of alcoholic liquor on public property, except where expressly permitted by law and the board that oversees the institution, we have a resolution that KCKCC hereby exempts for Wednesday, June 12th, 2024, from 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM, the multipurpose Room A101 at the Thomas, Dr. Thomas R. Burke Technical Education Center from the requirements of KSA 41-719D. And this exemption is granted in connection with the holding of the Leadership 2000 Graduation Celebration passed and approved by the Board of KCKCC in a meeting held on March 19th, 2024.
All right. Could we have a motion to approve the resolution, please?
So move.
All second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. Thank you. All right. That brings us to the end of our meeting this evening. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Before we do that, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to make a comment. And it was in Dr. Myers' report. We all got it. It just looks like our basketball teams had a very successful season. And it's nobody's fault. There's nothing anybody could do about it. It's a shame they couldn't have it on their home court. But I think that makes it all the more remarkable, you know? They're playing away and, you know, at least a couple of different gyms. And, you know, wasn't an obstacle for them. So congratulations to the athletes. Congratulations to the coaches and our AD for pulling that off and everybody that helped pull it off. And thanks for including it in your report, Dr. Myers. That was encouraging.
Thank you. Any other closing comments? If not, do we have a motion?
So move. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.
We are out of here.